The Brattleboro Plan and Commission meeting Monday, April 3rd, April 7th, I'm sorry, at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call to order. We do have a quorum, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move to approve the minutes with March 3rd, 2025, and March 27th, 2020. Are there any discussions?
We need a motion.
We need a motion. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion we accept the minutes as spoken.
Make it a second.
Call second.
All right. All in favor? All right, minutes have been accepted. Okay, 6:10. Make any announcements, Sue. Do you have any announcements as we move down?
Yeah, I have two announcements. The first is that the interim zoning bylaw for the water and sewer areas was passed by the select board on March 20th. I think that was their meeting. So they did pass that. Some of the property owners know the outcome of that, but yeah. So that's good. We're working on getting our regulations kind of smoothed out to include that and the new map. And then my second announcement, which we'll talk about a little bit more in depth, is that the town plan survey is out. There is a website for that. I think you all received a flyer and an email last week. Feel free to share that with people that might want to take that survey. And if you haven't, let me know and I'll resend. Gary Danus.
Sorry, Sue. Last question. Could you explain which ordinance you're referring to?
It was... Sure. That was the one where we took properties that had access to water in sewer and upzoned them so that they complied with the state statute. We actually went a little bit further from that, so.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Does anyone else have any additional announcements they'd like to make before we move on to the downtown bike parking data? All right, that being said, we're going to move down to that, downtown bike parking data. Sue, would you like to, maybe use that time too, to give a little bit more explanation on that?
Sure. So I don't know if you all had a chance to read the memo, but Tom has kind of been facilitating this project. He's been working with the Wyndham Regional Commission to kind of display data. And I think he's at the point where he's looking for a little feedback on the data and how to make decisions on where we might want to recommend adding some more bike racks. So he kind of provided a background as to what he's been doing and provided an update that he conducted six inventories that included weekend evenings, weekday evenings, weekend evenings, and weekend mid-days to kind of diversify the data that the Wyndham Regional Commission had been collecting. They do counts once a month. And so he was trying to fill out the different times that it might happen. He's gotten some resources from Local Motion on, you know, general characteristics indicative of sufficient downtown bike parking. He's put together, worked with the Wyndham Regional Commission, and he provided some data about the counts that he's done, as well as historical data. If you had a chance, maybe if he sent it over the weekend, so you may have seen it today. And he's looking for feedback on the best practices that he listed, and then also the data representations that were provided. On the second page of his memo, there's some bullet points regarding rack locations and quantities, rack design, rack amenities, and legalities of citing that he was looking for some feedback on. So maybe, I don't know if anybody wants to give any broad opinion, or if we can just go through them point by point and see how you want to respond.
Sue, I just have a question. Where's the money? I mean, is it in the memo that he did?
How much is it going to cost, just really quick?
So there was, Local Motion had put in their background materials that it would be approximately $132 per rack with the discount that Local Motion gets through a particular company. You know, I don't know where the money is coming from on the downtown side, but I wouldn't say that's necessarily... If there was buy-in for more bike racks, you know, we could probably find the funding for a couple of bike racks in the downtown. But I don't know until we... I do have concerns that sometimes Local Motion is trying to affect a large mode share in the way people are traveling. I mean, we saw that last year when we were talking about their suggested regulations, which I think the current conditions of our downtown biking is, from what we've learned from the Walk Bike Plan, that that is kind of centered around, you know, really sophisticated bike commuters who are going to be biking in our downtown, so.
Okay.
That's the way I look at it. So I, you know, I think that the data is interesting. I think, you know, one of his first questions is, should we be using a data-driven approach, analyzing the inventory to see where and how many bikes want to park? I mean, we've got the data. I think we should be analyzing it, is what I would say to that.
Yeah, I don't know what the alternative would be.
Yeah.
A non-data approach, a purely emotional approach.
Yeah. He suggests, you know, one of the recommendations that we could do is crowd source recommendations for bike parking via survey and map. So Local Motion has apparently done this for other communities where they create a little map, and then you can drop a pin, I guess, where you might be interested in having bike parking. And again, I want to say, this is for the downtown only. So his question is, should we do this? And it seems like Local Motion would be willing to assist us.
My only comment, and I really can't make a specific one without numbers, is that this is, in my opinion, at least, a dicey time to be asking for more money. Inopportune, maybe would be a better word, inopportune time to be asking for money. But it depends, of course, on, you know, how much. A hundred bucks is chump change, but if it's 10 or 20 of them, it starts moving into money that people will recognize. I don't know. I mean, there's no, I don't know how much the estimate was of what it would cost to implement the plan, so.
But there's not really a plan yet, so that's the idea. He's trying to get there. And I think, you know, the Downtown Transportation Fund is one great source for this kind of project that we could look to. So I don't think it should be a huge barrier at this point.
Is anyone else?
Any thoughts on the crowdsourcing? Is that worth doing? Bonnie?
Yeah, I was just wondering if Tom is recommending how many new bike racks he might want to see in town, because he's a cyclist, and I don't know if any of us, the rest of us, are. But so it would be definitely something he would understand more than we would. So I was just wondering. I didn't get to read what you posted about it. So, and that would make a difference in how we approach it, I think, if he's only saying, "Let's have two more, you know, seven slots for bikes someplace," and it's not a big deal.
So in his memo, he is not recommending at this time. I think he was, you know, before he goes there, was trying to determine, you know, do we want to do some crowdsourcing, some sort of survey mapping first? The other way of determining rack locations and quantities that he put in there was to use land use information, you know, and deduce the need for bike parking. You know, I think our, my personal opinion is our downtown is pretty mixed use. I'm not sure that's necessary for the downtown. You know, I think I'd be more interested in crowdsourcing data if we felt we needed that.
Sue, is your opinion that Tom's, a hopeful outcome of this is that he'll get feedback and it will begin a discussion that will eventually lead to a recommendation?
Yeah, he says the next steps would be to review the final map to visuals, to develop recommendations specific to Brattleboro, share that information with relevant town deciders, property owners, and the public, and receive feedback, finalize the assessment document, and then deliver it, and then review any implementation of it. So I think he's thinking of it kind of like a typical planning project, right? We're going to put together our recommendations and kind of get it out there to the public, take feedback, and then finalize it.
It just seems like sort of a, it seems like sort of a less effective way of bringing the subject up without having the passionate proponent of it here to actually present and, you know, hold conversation, if you will. Does that make sense? I'm trying not to be, I'm trying to be respectful of the time and energy he's put into it, but he's the one that's really passionate about this, and I think he should be the one that's really kind of driving the discussion. I mean, I hope I'm being positive and helpful with these comments.
I don't have much to say about it, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I wonder, do other commissioners have strong feelings about it? You know, he had asked that it be on the agenda, and he knew he wasn't going to be here, so I'd go with the assumption that he was hoping for a little feedback.
Well, it seems to me like what he's doing is working on a project that's aimed at making the downtown more accessible and more inclusive, and that's positive. And so if he's willing to put in the time and energy into that, then I think that's great, and he should do that. I think that, I don't know that we're going to have necessarily a lot of opinions on the specifics. I think that probably he's more of an expert than a lot of us, and so it makes sense for him to guide a lot of the discussion and the direction of the project. And then we can maybe help with some of the technical things, maybe, once it gets to what we consider appropriate, for example, for citing, you know, if we want to aim for having these on public property, if we want the town to engage with private property owners, things like that.
Guess the feedback I would give him from a process standpoint is, and again, I may be corrected as we wait for comments from other people, but I think he'll be more effective with this group if he brings a specific proposal that the group can look at, at review, and edit, rather than looking for us to generate our ideas ourselves. That's my opinion, based on what I've seen in previous conversations on this subject and what I'm seeing tonight.
I would agree. I think Tom should unabashedly lead on that. And I know from trying to lead other groups and stuff, sometimes I ask people, "Oh, what do you want to do? How can you, like, how do you want to be involved?" And people are like, "I don't know." This is maybe that situation. He should unabashedly lead us in the direction that he wants to go, and will provide feedback when he has a proposal.
Yeah. And I would provide, at a personal level, I would say that he's done wonderful work so far, and he seems, you know, he's brought us a lot of data. So kudos to him for that.
I would like to think, since he's the grand architect of that, that I would also agree, he should be also the person to expound on it and explain a little bit more what direction, what he's trying to say, being I'm just facilitating it. I really don't know what's, really in-depth, what he was trying to crowdsource, you know, informationally. So that's just my opinion. And I, you know, I discussed that earlier. I said, "That's probably a better idea." I mean, if you're going to be baking a cake, you're the one that says the ingredients, you should be here.
Sue, I have a suggestion, or actually, a question and a suggestion. So there are two maps which we could display if you'd like, which I believe he must have worked with you to get this into the ArcGIS.
With Wyndham Regional Commission.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I think he's communicating a bit of what he's already done, but I think all of us know downtown well enough that we could at least get a sense by either right now or individually, independently, exploring those, the interactive maps that he linked to. Those are great. They have pictures of each bike rack. If you haven't, you know, gazed over in that direction before, you would say, "Oh, that's a bike rack," you know. So, you know, we have a, we do have some material to discuss, but I think the, it's the devil's in the details problem that you're getting at. But I think, having, let's see, I think at least we've had two, maybe three meetings with Local Motion over the past year or so?
Yeah, we had had meetings with Local Motion on previous, on adding bike parking to our land use regulations. This is, this is a little bit separate. He reached out to them to see about guidance on, you know, where, what is best practice for where bike racks should be located, so.
What's adequate and so forth. Yeah, so to get to, like, what we actually have on the ground versus what would be ideal, I think we can look at the best practices list that he's got, and those bullet points you were referring to. And, you know, for example, one of them says that they should be colorful and very visible, right? I think we can all agree, if we look at the co-op, for example, the bike rack in front of the co-op, if you look at the map, you can click on the link, and it shows the, you know, the, it's, I think it's black or dark colored or whatever. So, you know, I guess there's just some suggestions that he's looking for. Is that right?
Yes.
So we could look through this, but, I mean, we don't, we could do this individually. I think he's looking for feedback because he has done a lot of work already. And I think, as, you know, anyone who walks around or bikes or drives and walks, you know, downtown, I think we could all give some feedback. Is that...
I think that's what basically he was looking for tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, so, I don't know. Do you want to, do you want to put time into displaying the maps, share your screen and all that? Or do you, I mean, what do we want to do? I mean, he has charts as well, which are interesting, as far as, I think it's percentage use we could look at, you know, are we, do we really need, basically, are we asking, do we really need more bike racks? Do we need more in a certain location? That kind of thing. I think we could answer, we could at least give some feedback on that. But, you know.
I guess, am I wondering, I guess my question is, has anybody took time to look at the information that was sent to them?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I mean...
I mean, no? Okay, so that's John. I got to know. So I guess maybe we should...
I think this is one of the topics, though, that I get the sense that some of you maybe have more of an interest than another one, than other people. And so, you know, another way to get Tom the information is, you know, you could still send it to, you could do that work and send it to him under the direction of, "Put the plan together. Like, we'll support you with that."
Okay.
I mean, let's be honest, it's of particular interest to heavy-duty bike riders. You know, even the casual bike rider like myself that takes a bike down occasionally downtown is going to, is much less interested. And I'm speaking for myself now. I can't speak, obviously, for everyone, but I do think bike, serious bike riders will have more interest in this, which is fine. I mean, that's the way a lot of this stuff works.
So do we want to then plan on, if you've got comments, that you can, you can send them to me, you can send them to Tom and CC me. You know, I think that a couple of areas would be brightly colored. Do we need signage indicating bike parking? And then also, there was a question about, should we be considering bike lockers, which we've had in the past and weren't very, yeah, they were challenging for the town, so I'm not sure that, yeah, that would be something to consider about bike lockers and their use. But it's addressed in the materials that he sent, so.
And Sue, you would say that if we included all these items, it would still be relatively nominal cost?
I, yeah. I mean, yes and no. It depends on how many bike racks and whether there was a plan for bike lockers. I think that is a, a plan for bike lockers is a bigger conversation with Public Works or, you know, wherever those facilities might be, because we've had challenges with them in the past. But, yeah, I think it's a nominal cost if it's like $130 per bike rack. I know Public Works has put out bike racks even more in the downtown than there used to be, so.
You have that portable one dimension.
I'll send my comments then to you on the issue, Joe.
Any other comments on this? Does that sound like a plan? I don't want to take up time if there's not, you know, a lot of interest at this meeting.
Any thoughts, any more discussion? All right, the next is the town plan for 2026. Community conversation.
Sorry, I'm just... John, do you want to speak to the town plan? Do you want me to start it?
Well, I will start it, but very briefly. My question, though, is, are you going to display your information, or should we be looking at it on our computer? The data, for example, and then the questions with Tom's edits.
Oh, I can display that.
Okay.
I can display that.
So the only comment I'll make is, I think you and Steve have done a wonderful job so far collecting what data we have, and I'm as interested as everyone in hearing what your, what the next steps are.
Okay. Which was first on the agenda?
Oh, that would be...
Okay, let's do the community conversations first.
Yes.
And then we'll get into the data. So the idea of the community conversations, I think other places call it meeting in a box, we can call it that, is that we'll finalize some questions and include them in this document that I've created, and then ask planning commissioners to go about having some conversations, whether it be family members, neighbors, people you interact with. And if that's something that you are not interested in doing, or you don't have the connections, then let me know, and staff will be doing some of this as well. But the idea is to try to get, speaking to some people that maybe don't take the survey, or, you know, even if they took the survey, these are different questions to help get us some information for the town plan. I'm just going to share my screen. So the key thing for tonight is, we really want to settle on some questions that we're going to ask, so that they're the same, no matter who we're talking to. I think in the memo, I wrote that we can have up to 10. I think that's a lot. I think we're probably better at, like, five questions, because we don't want to take too much time from people.
I mean, broadly, when you think about this, you have to sort of do the math. These are not yes-no questions. These are discussion slash listen to everybody's input questions. So that could be, what, five, 10 minutes a question?
Right.
And, you know, reasonably, you're only going to have so much time with these folks before their eyes glaze, so.
Yeah. So I brainstormed some questions, and I kind of categorized them, but they wouldn't need to be categorized. What I have on the screen, can everybody see it, are, Tom had sent a response over the weekend, and these were just his opinions, but it's easy to put it up. He felt the ones in red were ones that were too similar to the survey questions that he asked. The one in green were ones that he was interested in, thought that could be good questions to ask. Go ahead, John.
Couple of questions. The first question is, I saw that we had some 20-odd questions. Is part of the expected or hoped outcome that we reduce these to the five or 10 that we want to actually use?
Yes, and it doesn't have to, I mean, this was, just to give you something to think about, if one of you, you know, if you have all thought of some questions that are not on this list, by all means, let us know.
Okay, but it isn't the expectation, isn't that we're going to use all of these 20, it's that we're going to filter this list down. Okay, good.
Yeah.
The second question I have, and this might be a broader question, is, at one time we had talked about provoking conversation with questions that we knew would be provocative, sorry to use the word, same word twice. But I would say these, from my perspective, don't necessarily provoke a choose-and-then-discuss-why type response. They're, they're kind of un-inflammatory. I don't know the right word. And if you don't agree, that's absolutely fine. But, and if we decided to go a different way, that's fine as well. I was just wondering.
Yeah, they, I felt like for general conversations with the public of, you know, not very long, you know, to sit down with people, maybe it's a half an hour, maybe it's an hour, if you're lucky, I didn't, wasn't thinking the provoking questions for that. That would be more for, we have an in-depth public meeting on land use, and then maybe we'd get into that there.
I think that's perfectly fair. Asking a group of strangers, you know, how should we prioritize donations to human service organizations versus property taxes would definitely be difficult.
Yeah.
Because that is an example of a provocative-type question that you're trying to drive some sort of group balancing on.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say that question is necessarily relevant to the town plan per se, but, so I don't know that I would want to ask that, but that's my opinion.
Okay, I'm fine.
Anyone else? Can't see Bonnie.
So does anybody want to jump in with any questions that they, that they're interested in having us ask, or being on the list? Anything that struck you, any topic area?
I'm just, I'm looking at the questions, so I'm just wanting, thinking.
You see the smoke rising?
Yes, gears are turning.
You're a thinker. I like that. That's a good thing. I think, I think maybe Sue's up there, taking some of that in, digesting that, I guess, coming back. What do you think?
Well, no, I think we want to finish this tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this one, I think we'd like to kind of finalize what some of those things are, yeah.
You know, considering we'd like to get started on it, if possible.
Agreed. Totally. I'm going to give you guys a couple, kind of like 10 minutes, I think, for you.
I think that nine and 12 are interesting to me.
Nine is what about economic development in Brattleboro concerns you, and 12 is, what actions do you think we can take to strengthen downtown?
Yeah.
Hey, Sue?
Yeah.
Do you have an idea of how we might come to a resolution on what five or 10 we're going to choose?
Um, no, but I was just thinking about that. I mean, we could, I could just read through them, and we can thumbs up, thumbs down, and kind of narrow it down.
That's reasonable to me.
What's up?
I said, "That's reasonable to me." I've somehow lost the faces, but nevertheless.
Sorry.
I can't see Bonnie. Yeah, she's...
Yeah, Bonnie, if you have anything to say right now, you're off the screen, so feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I'm on my screen.
You're there. You're just hitting, like, I have it in a column, and it's...
I'll speak up. Don't worry. I'm still just reading a lot.
No, good, good. I already have mine already picked. No, good, good. I already have mine's already picked.
I think number 18 is interesting.
What makes Brattleboro feel like a community to you? What are some ways the town can strengthen community in your neighborhood?
That's a good one.
I understand that Tom thinks it was similar to a survey question. I, I don't, I mean, maybe it is. I, I just like it.
This, um, I wrote this question to get, I think in our February meeting Bonnie had talked about, you know, community gardening and, you know, we were, that, that was my attempt to get at what are things we can do to improve life, like in your immediate area.
Make it more vibrant.
Yeah.
I really like that question too.
I think number 20 is also important.
Yeah.
What role should alternative transportation options, bus, bike lanes, trails, train play in the overall mobility strategy for Brattleboro? Might need to reword it a little bit. It's a bit jurgely, but. Has everybody had a chance to read through? Maybe we can.
I think, yeah, I, I think 21 could bring up some pretty heated conversations. It's kind of, I mean, especially you're just, we're just talking to friends and neighbors, so it's, I think that that's kind of a good question.
Okay, let's go through, if you want to do thumbs up, if you want to kind of keep it on the list for now. Thumbs down if, if you don't care.
Sue, do you want to put a maximum on the number of thumbs ups you can give?
Ooh. What do you think planning commission?
I wouldn't bother during the first round. Let's see what happens. And if it turns out there's an issue, we could go back and do those again.
Yeah, that's good suggestions. Okay, so one, what projects do you feel contribute to Brattleboro's health, viability and quality of life? Keep it or lose it? I got.
Lose it.
Nobody said the no. You couldn't, you couldn't.
Lose it. I was looking for the thumb up, you know, on my computer.
So Bonnie, you're a no. Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, I'm a no.
Well, I, I'm a yes because I'm, I'm looking at, you know, this as a, perhaps a, a warm-up question. You know, it's not that you're, you're trying to have a huge impact with the most interesting questions. If you're really calling this a conversation, I think you need to have something to warm people up.
Okay, well, we had one vote yes, so I will leave it on for now. We're gonna get rid of all the, the pretty strong no's, maybe. We'll see how this voting goes. Maybe we should do the five, four, three, two, one voting, which is five, you strongly, you love this question, you, you're really strong for it. Four is, yeah, really like it. Three, you're neutral. Two, no, I don't really like it. One, I, not at all. In that way, if, unless it's got a four or five, we won't keep it on the list. Any thoughts? Would that be better?
If you can keep track of it.
I don't know how to do that.
Okay, we'll stick with the thumbs up, thumbs down. Okay. Um, okay, so what are the top places and issues that need attention is question two? Have we got a thumbs up?
This is too vague for me. I would just, top places, anyway.
Oh, yeah, that is kind of vague. I have to do neutral because what, what places and issues are we, there's still many.
Well, we don't know that it's gonna stay, but for now it will. Okay. What should the planning cr, what should the planning commission be addressing in the town plan is question three?
I, I don't understand this question because we're told what to address by law.
Yeah, but, but yes, but I mean, it might not be the best question.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll vote then.
Okay.
Yeah. Here we have our guide.
For those of you who are looking for thumbs down and feel good about it.
Can you see my little X that says no?
I can, that's great, Bonnie. Thank you.
Nice touch, Bonnie. Very nice touch.
Dan, you had a hands up. Do you feel strongly about it?
Yeah, I do, I do. Again, you, you're talking about a gathering of questions and this is, you know, someone might, you may not get much of a great response and that's fine, but if anyone had an opinion as to what we should be addressing, that would be interesting to know.
Uh, number four is what are your big ideas for the town plan?
Um, again, I think to some extent we're dictated to by law, but I have a suggestion and that is, I'm assuming when, when the, you use the term town plan, what you really mean is what are your big ideas for the future? Or eight years from now, or you know, in the time of the town plan. And I would vote for that. I just wouldn't vote for what are your big ideas for the town plan because we're gonna get a whole bunch of stuff that we, we possibly couldn't do, just because we have to do other things.
Okay, so for the big ideas for the town plan, Gary, I didn't see yours, sorry.
I was saying, neutral on that.
Okay, John. All right, well, we got rid of one. Let's see, the next one is how do you think Brattleboro will change in the coming years? What pressures might we face and what opportunities might we avail ourselves? Okay, all right. In what ways do you want Brattleboro to grow?
This is a really interesting question.
All right. Um, considering long-term negligible population change, rising average age and decreasing household size, how should Brattleboro respond? All right, we got three yeses on that, so we'll keep it on for now. Okay. What opportunities do you need to feel financially stable and secure? How will your employment needs change? I thought I had gotten rid of this one, sorry. I know I can't, I had thought, saw this somewhere. I thought I had gotten rid of it. Maybe I'm, I'm coloring your. Did everybody vote on that? Okay, okay, good. I don't like it, so thank you. Uh, number nine, what about economic development in Brattleboro concerns you?
Any type of development.
Bonnie, you were a yes on that. Are you, do you feel strongly about that one?
I really like that question because I think it gives people an opportunity to talk about what might be happening in, in developing areas of Brattleboro, so.
Um, 10 is what role does tourism have in Brattleboro's economic development?
That's a strange question. I'm sorry.
Well, it, it actually depends on your perspective, but I, I believe, I support it, so it'll come to a vote.
What are your economic development priorities for Brattleboro? And I think, you know, if we settle on one of these questions, some of the talking points under it could, could refer back to one of the other questions if it doesn't stimulate. Anyway.
Remember, it's gonna be a five-minute conversation and so you could touch on more topics related to that single question, right?
Right, right. What actions do you think we can take to strengthen downtown? All right. 13 is change will happen. As the town continues to evolve, what is important to preserve? What would you hate to see Brattleboro lose as it grows and changes over time? And Tom, Tom voted for this one saying, even adding that if it, it could be broadly interpreted. I mean, those were, you know, I put it under different topic areas. It wouldn't have to be.
A question for you, Sue. Can we separate those two questions and vote on them separately? I know that they're similar, but there's two questions there.
That is, yeah, as the technologies evolve, what are we going to be preserving?
Not sure we're knocking down questions, but.
A or B.
This is the thing. So A would be as the town continues to evolve, what is important to preserve? I mean, I would, you know, we got some of this in the survey material too. And then, so I don't know if you want to vote on that one. Where are we over this one? No? You want to keep them? Oh, Bonnie voted. Well, then the other one is what would you hate to see Brattleboro lose as it grows and changes over time? Do you like, you like the, the second part of the question better, Dan?
Yeah, or it doesn't have to use the word hate, I guess, but yeah, I, I think I would, I think that's a different question than the, what we're preserving as we evolve. I know it's similar, but.
It, it was really intended to be a historic preservation question, which is why the preservation comes in. It was Tom kind of suggesting that you could make it broader than that. But when I wrote it, it was intended to be about historic.
Historic preservation, okay.
So that's an interesting comment. If it's broader than historic preservation, I vote up. If it's just about historic preservation, I don't think we have time in the small number of questions we have available to us to dwell on, you know, somebody wanting to keep this building or that building.
I would concur.
And by the way, I, I agree with Dan. I think you could easily say what would you not like?
We don't have to use hate. That's a good.
Not want to lose, yeah.
Yeah, not want to lose. That's perfectly fine.
Okay. Well, it seemed to be support for the question if it's separated from the historic preservation.
Let's take that preserve part instead of saying losing. Brattleboro preserves as it grows, you know, saying, get the language, that's what.
Yeah, yeah, this, it's the second part, I think. 14, what historic preservation considerations and values should form the basis of preservation planning in Vermont, in, in Brattleboro? For example, architectural heritage, unique neighborhoods. I'm not seeing much there. No, no. No, from Gary. Okay, no, all right.
It's a very important question, but I don't think for this.
For this exercise, yeah. I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, environment. What are your environmental priorities for Brattleboro in the next 20 years?
Well, just the way the question is asked, honestly, I, again, I, I think if you sort of say, you know, how should Brattleboro respond to environmental changes, that might be appropriate, but I just don't want to get the same answers like, you know, we need to go to, you know, less gas and all those other kinds of things. That doesn't really help us.
Um, that one's out, so.
As Dan says, it's not a bad question. It's just I don't think it's worthy of the five or 10 that we have available.
What are your top concerns about the anticipated climate change risks in Brattleboro? For example, extreme weather events or climate-related impacts? What are your priorities for ensuring our community can adapt and be resilient to these events? Seeing some support for that. Uh, 17 is what neighborhood do you live in? What are the assets in your neighborhood that the town plan should guide future development around?
Uh, sorry, Sue, can you scroll down?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Now, the color schemes, the red and the green, is that?
That was Tom's. He liked the green ones. He likes the red ones. He doesn't care for. That was just Tom's vote. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I see, Lindsay, did anybody else vote on this? And I can't see with my readers. How did you vote, Gary? Oh, it's 17. What neighborhood do you live in? What are the assets of the town, that the town plan should guide development around?
I put my thumbs up.
You were thumbs up, Gary. Okay. 18 is what makes Brattleboro feel like a community to you? What are some ways that the town can hang, help strengthen community in your neighborhood? No.
Sue, this is a really interesting question. If we had the opportunity to edit the survey at some point, I could see putting value words on the survey to this question. Be really interesting to see what people respond with.
I don't think we can edit the survey. We'd have to go out with a new one.
No, I'm sorry. That's, that's really what I meant.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could, um, we could go out with some, you know, quick survey type things throughout this, this process, so.
It's a really interesting question, though.
Okay. Um, saw some support for it. 19 is how can Brattleboro best guide new housing development? Where can it fit and why?
Can't see Bonnie. Bonnie, you have your thumbs up, right?
We got some thumbs, we got some. Uh, so Lindsay, you don't care for this question?
Yeah, because we need housing everywhere, so.
Okay. Okay. I'm still gonna keep it up, but I just was curious.
That's why.
Okay. 20 is what role should alternative transportation options such as bus, bike lanes, uh, trails, train, play in the overall mobility strategy for Brattleboro? And this maybe could be reworded. Go ahead, Dan.
I ask you to clarify, did we vote 19 off or?
No, no, it's still.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Danny, you're up, you're up. Okay, there's a couple up on this one. Uh. Yeah. And 21 is what is your opinion of town services and facilities today? How do these services, services and facilities need to evolve in the future to meet the needs of Brattleboro residents and businesses? So three, two vote.
I, I might put no, I really don't.
You're down? Your thumbs down?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I think there were two ups. All right, well, we didn't really knock that many out, so this voting strategy didn't work.
Would you be able to take a minute, Sue, and type, I know you said we didn't remove very many, but would you be able to take a minute and maybe type or, or copy and paste the ones that we did keep into one document where they appear all next to each other and not separated so that we could like just take them in as a whole and see how they relate to one another?
I can do that.
Maybe we could give you like a few minutes to do that and then we could come back to the discussion when you're ready.
Yeah, am I still screen sharing? Are you seeing what it goes up for? Are you seeing, I'm trying to open a new document.
It says Gary's name up at the top. Followed by a list of organizations and whatnot.
Okay, so.
Way too many. At least we're gonna tally that. Is that gonna be attached to an update on this list for us, Sue, as well, too, so we remember?
Oh, I'll be finishing off the document and sending it, so, okay, let's see, we got rid of. Oh, wait, I think we were keeping three, that was this one. It's renumbering, I'm sorry, but.
No, I think that's good that it's renumbering. I, I kind of. No, I think that's good that it's renumbering. I, I kind of want to look at it again, like with them all together fresh so that I can see how they relate to one another and then maybe I'll be able to make better more helpful decisions.
Oops. Oh, no, my transportation isn't on this list. I've got two more I just need to type in, so.
And what is it, twenty-one, two municipal facilities?
Okay. Okay. So I believe they're all up here. Um. Okay. Um. So one way we could go about it is to kind of um narrow it down by the groups. Um, first of all, so we don't have seven kind of general questions in there for business and economics, so we could, we could go about trying to figure out which questions we like the best in there first. Um. Before ranking them against each other, um, or the other categories, or you just want to
I would suggest getting rid of number five because I feel like we're covering the same ideas, but in a better way in the economic development section. I realize growth can be something other than business and economic development, but I think for the sake of this, I don't know, I don't think that number five is gonna help us as much as the questions in the business section will help us.
That sounds everybody okay with that? Okay. Bonnie?
Bonnie, who's here?
Yeah, okay.
I'll get you a Dan, I don't know if Dan answered.
Yeah, I saw Dan. Um.
I also feel like maybe the same thing applies to number one, like other questions are getting more specific. I mean, it could be a good like intro question, but I feel like you also might get like really long windy answers that, that maybe will take up too much time.
I agree.
And anybody else? Want to weigh in?
It's fine by me.
I, I'd be more in favor of getting rid of number two.
That's what are the top places and issues that need attention?
Yeah, because I, you know, rather than need attention seems to be like the negative way to look at it, but projects you feel contribute is the positive and it's giving some specific health, viability, quality of life. You know, you, you just, for example, someone might say, you know, the uh memorial park, the swimming pool, you know, basketball courts, you know, those are projects that contribute to quality of life, right?
Could one and two be combined then into something like, what are the top places that contribute to Brattleboro's health, viability and quality of life?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I feel like knowing like actual places, like hopefully we would be encouraging people to actually name things that that would be more helpful and specific information. And then I would be fine with getting rid of number two then.
Seeing some head shaking. Okay. Uh, Gary says, thinking about getting rid of number five, which is
What's going on now? You know, who knows? You know, as far as, but the coming years are looking at.
That's considering the long-term negligible population change? I've had a lot of support from, from you all.
So I, I would actually support keeping that and for uh one reason is because I, I think the long term, the town plan is more about the future than it is necessarily about what projects we want to see today. And that prompts thoughts about the future. And then the second reason I would support keeping that is because I don't think a large portion, this is entirely my gut, if you will, or intuition, understands that the town hasn't grown in, in fifty years and the town is getting older. And what was the last one?
Decreasing household size.
Yeah, and decreasing household size. And I think it would be valuable to let people know that, you know, the town isn't um what necessary, and I can't say this without creating judgment, but I, I think it would be valuable for the town to know that this is the data. I'll leave it that way. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Yeah, the only reason why I mentioned that, I think the town, a lot of people of Brattleboro already know from the last couple of meetings and are, they pretty much have an idea of what's going on today's climate. Uh, in regards to that, and, and that reason why I mentioned that, you know, what, will the changes come? We don't know what pressures might, we still have a lot that's coming down and that's happening.
That's a different question, Gary. That's number three.
Yeah, but number five saying, how do you think Brattleboro will change in the coming, we don't know that. What pressures might we face with the opportunities might we avail ourselves? Now, that part, yeah, but the beginning part, we don't know what the coming years, I mean, you could rest, you could assume what the coming is on number five.
Oh, wait, you should be looking at these numbers now. Now we're all over the place. So we're talking about number four right now. I think, Dan, you had something you wanted to say?
I, so, uh, yes, thanks. Uh, you know, I think we all agree, these are really important questions in general, right? But there's a style, I think, that you need to, we need to kind of discuss. These are, so number four, just to focus on that one. John, I completely agree. It's a future oriented question. It's a great essay question. But it's not necessarily a great, I think we could pare it down. It's not necessarily a great conversation question. That would be my suggestion that somehow we get at the notion, get at the idea of how should Brattleboro respond to changes that are out of its control perhaps, or something, you know, uh, something to that effect, but um I, I, again, I think this is a great essay question. But it's not necessarily a great, because you're going to have to explain this question more than you're going to have a discussion of the answers. You know what I mean?
I agree with you.
Going to get muddy.
Got a lot, there's a lot packaged in there and I think people are going to interpret all those things, negligible population change, that's that's a little loaded, but you know, there's all these different interpretations too, so I don't know, I would simplify in, in general. And again, these are great questions in general, you know, they're, they're very interesting questions, but for the sake
So Dan, actually, that brings up a, that brings up something I, I didn't really approach. When we talk about questions one and two,
Hmm.
Um, my concern would be um, that we're just going to get the same stuff that we, we're getting right now, right, from the from the uh interactions that the select board is doing, from the you know, comments that are posted in the reformer and on neighborhood blah, 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 or whatever. You know, it's going to be, well, I'm sorry, now I, I'm lost with the
The numbers?
The, the numbers as well. It was the issue of what are the, what are the challenges we have and what are the things that we ought to preserve? And I just wondered if we're going to be, okay, the challenges we have downtown are drug use and all those things that, you know, are very important issues, obviously, but I'm not sure they're going to we're going to add anything new to them. And, and again, I, it's just a discussion, right? I mean, it's kind of a way ahead. Because I agree with your comments on the question about the future. It's, it is going to have to be explained and you're still probably going to get some people that just aren't going to believe that, that that's the way it is. So I, I don't know. I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the answer is and I'm certainly willing to follow the direction of the group.
So, so as a, I guess I keep going back to the fact that this is a conversation. These are verbal questions, right? So, so we want them to be conversational and, and I want to be comfortable delivering them, right? I don't want to have to read them necessarily. I mean, I can read them, but I don't want to have to read them if I don't, you know what I mean? If I lose track of what I'm saying, so um, I'd like them to be simplified and that's, you know, like number one and number two are pretty straightforward. Once we get into, and three, I could I could roll with one or the other, basically. Um, and then four gets into, you know, some technical things where I'm going to need graphs, you know, basically. And, you know, i- i- I'm just saying, so if we, if we have a conversation, then the, the, that could kind of dictate how the questions are phrased.
Okay, well, that's a fair comment about fours might require some graphs and, and backup data and all the rest, and that may not be appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish. So I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, great question, but, you know.
It's not clear to me how numbers three and five are different from one another. And I feel like the wording on number three is more concise, and so I would pick three over five if I were choosing.
I'd go for that.
Okay.
Okay, so five's out. Um, it sounds like four is out.
Yeah, I, I've dropped support of four.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
All right. Very convincing, Dan. Thank you.
You did just erase part of the end of question three, just so you know.
Ah.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. I think if you hit, I think if you hit undo and try again or
Yeah, I think I delete a lot, so. And, okay, let's go down to the economic development. Questions for now.
The, the only thing I'll say, just because it's a general comment, is I, I just don't want to get discussion and obsession over gentrification. And not, not that it's not a valid point discussed, but I mean, it's not going to tell us anything. People are, people are going to be worried about gentrification. They're going to be worried about losing out as a result of it. And what does it tell us? I mean, I think we're trying to get new information with this. And that's just my opinion. So it's not, not that it isn't important, it's just that I, I just want to get something more than the kind of the standard rote answer from folks. So, my, my opinion.
John, is that, is that a concern you have with question four? What are economic, what econ, what about economic development in Brattleboro concerns you or?
Uh, I would be very concerned that that would head straight into, you know, something that revolves around gentrification. And, and I mean, it's a valid concern, but it's I'd like to get something more out of the discussion than that. And that's just my opinion, obviously.
Uh, i- if I may, John, this is just maybe, I'm not, I, I hear you on that, um, but um open-ended questions are great, so you might, you might be surprised at what people respond, right? I'm just saying, you know, uh, it may be that you are correct, that everyone will say that, but it, and it may revolve around, you know, uh dire gloom and doom, whatever, but um, but they may surprise you with open, with an open-ended question. I, I, I guess, uh, I'd be curious to see what people actually said to that, but, but I, I guess if I were to rank, if I start ranking these, you know, um, the, the other one that has economic development in it is number five, and I think number four is definitely above number five in my, in my book. Um, as far as like, I know tourism is a particular uh, economic issue, but um, we might get that, that might be an issue that comes up in number four.
I agree with that. I think, I think five is unnecessarily detailed as compared to the other one. So I think I was the big supporter of five. I'm willing to give it up.
Everybody all right with five going?
Yeah. Yes.
I think that if we get rid of five, then, um, which I'm fine with, um, we need to be more clear on what is presently number six. What do, what are economic development priorities? I'm not sure that I don't even know exactly what that is. So like, does that mean like job creation, uh, bringing in a server farm, uh, thing, you know, I, I, seems like we maybe would want to give people more direction about what that means.
And, and again, please, no cringing. Understand, maybe I'm an old guy. Give me, give me grace, but nobody can use the word equity and inclusion. No, I'm, I'm serious. I, I want more out of it is my point than just saying, well, it has to be equitable. Okay, I get that. I agree, it has to
But then I think as the, as the person holding the conversation, you need to delve into that a little bit more.
Yeah.
Well, and that's kind of what I mean. Like, is that what you're trying to get out of that question? Like, I read that question as like, I think that we should bring in more small businesses.
Right.
Really thinking about it from sort of a more emotional angle. I was thinking of it as like concrete, like we need a a larger UPS distribution facility, or we need union jobs or something, you know.
Let's add to our value-added farm products or something like that. I'm 100% with Lindsay if we can sort of phrase it around that so we don't get into a values discussion.
Well, even in Yes, that, that was my, that, that's where I was leaning with that question, Lindsay, or at least when I was in my mind, like, you know, the town of Brattleboro hasn't really actively done economic development. We work with BDCC, but you know, maybe the priority is small business versus attracting a new business here. Maybe the um, maybe the priority is we want to offer tax stabilization um, to businesses that want to expand here as opposed to throwing money at new businesses that want to relocate here, you know? That was, but it is, it's not clear.
In the conversation, if the question of conversation could lead the way that you and Lindsay are describing, I'm 100% in support of it. I think that's great.
It could also mean more dispensaries. It mean more, I mean, economically growth could mean many different things and more small businesses. So I think that, that interpretation will be defined once you ask that question, because everyone has their own interpretation, what they consider economic development and growth.
Yeah, I think the point is we'd need to narrow it a little bit or frame it a little bit better.
Dial out the length.
Maybe what kind of industries or what kind of businesses or something like that, just so people know that that's what we're looking for, or even just a preamble that so that people know what we're looking for.
Yeah, I, I, if I may, uh, in either four or five, I think what we're asking for are examples. So we could say, you know, can you give us or what are some examples of economic development in Brattleboro that concern you, right, in number four? Or, you know, can you give a, number five, you know, can you give us some examples of economic development priorities in Brattleboro that you would endorse, right? Or not, I don't know about the your, the use of the possessive there, you know, your economic priorities, uh, people don't usually conceptualize those things as their own thing, you know, but they might advocate for something that they see as
What, what types of businesses do you endorse? What types of businesses do you endorse for Brattleboro? I think that's
I want a list. I want some examples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dick, you could put that
I'm not so much interested in, in the businesses per se, but as the tools, um,
To either attract and retain, um, because I don't think we have a lot of say over. You know, we're going to get a brewery as opposed to a yogurt manufacturer.
Well, Sue, can I ask a question? If, if you put that, so what are your, your, your visions of economic development? Priorities in Brattleboro, so that way people can envision what they see. What it is for, as far as growth or what they, what they.
So what is your vision for economic development in Brattleboro?
So what are your visions of economic development? What are your thoughts or ideas of economic development priorities in Brattleboro? Would be probably a better way of phrasing that. Versus can you give us examples? Cause that can take.
Yeah.
And it were your actions.
I don't know where we're at with these economic development questions, but we haven't talked about six yet, unless anybody wants to speak. Four or five, is there a preference?
I don't think that we need number four.
Yeah, I agree. I kind of like number six because I think that could get people to speak out, um, about. Different ideas that they have that we might not be drawing out of them with the other question.
What I think is interesting about six is it's, I, I think it's under business and economic development, but it actually could be more about place making, like. For people that are in the know, like, do they want something to happen to the bridges? Are they interested in Preston lot or Harmony lot being turned into a precinct? So there's like, it's not just, in my mind, that question is, is broader than. Yeah, business and economic development.
If we had a lot of answers that dealt with, for example, in regards to six, now five, if we had a lot of. Answers that dealt with, for example, public safety. Would, would that, would we consider that to have been a s- a successful question? And, and if we do, then I'm okay with it. But if we're getting the same information that people are, you know, talking about today. And we want to have different information, then I would say we have to reword it a little bit. So we kind of. Ex- exclude that.
Um, I don't think that we can.
This is my opinion on how to do these questions. So obviously the, the group is going to decide this, but.
So I don't think that we can necessarily like, you know, preclude. Uh, you know, I think it's at the forefront of people's mind. I think what I could do is put some prompting questions to, you know, be a little bit. Yeah. If that's all we're getting, there's some prompts there for you as the person asking the question to kind of.
Re- refocus them?
Yeah, yeah. Or get more information out of it.
I mean, public safety is very, very important. It's just being extensively discussed.
But it could also be interesting to just take that and pass it along to, to the other people. I mean, it's, you know, we're probably going to hear it. A downtown question is probably going to elicit. All the things we hear.
Just as long as I don't get Hank in my meetings.
Dan?
Yeah, I, I just want to, yeah, um, so we're really going for a conversation here, right? Just want to make that clear. So, but. Uh, for example, if we were to do something like a word cloud with folks. Digitally, right? When, when people vote for certain things, basically, or give a word or two that they really think is important. I, I think we could get examples. That people agree on and, you know, a word cloud would sort of have the bigger word, a bigger representation of a word, you know? I, I'm not sure we would, you know, we can do, we can put downtown along with. Number four. I, I think we can combine these two basically, and I, I would basically want, I mean, unless we want to have two questions. That are in the business and economic development section, is that a possibility? Or do we want to eliminate one of these?
I don't see the need to eliminate one of them because I think they can be different enough. I know I've got them in that bucket, but.
Sure.
I think the downtown is, is probably broader.
Both of those are looking for examples, you know, what actions. Take, and if we narrow down number four, I think, you know, to focusing on, um. You know, sort of a list of examples that people would, you know, again, conversation, people are going to bounce off of each other. They're going to hear what someone else said. They said, yeah, I think that's good. And, you know, that it's just, it's just going to grow. Kind of like a word cloud does, you know?
Yeah, then the survey was really where we intended to output word cloud, which, which they've done, right? I mean.
Yeah.
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 Sue and Steve have done wonderful job of getting a word cloud out of those things.
Actually, Survey Monkey did it.
Well.
Thanks for the credit.
I had a credit automation. I think it was you and Steve, so.
No, it actually comes to mind though, can we use visual aids with the conversations? Can we use a word cloud or can we use something that's already in existence, like a graph or anything, or?
In these conversations, it wasn't the intent. Um, you know, I think we can, we can talk about, like, I want to have a public workshop on land use. You know, if we need another public workshop on different topics, you know, where we're doing more of a presentation and then discussions, we can, we can do something like that, but.
So a public, just as background, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but a public workshop would be similar what, to what, um, Sue and Steve did with, uh. That section of Putney Road. Where they sort of gave up, what's, what's it look like today and what could you do in the future with it and ask some questions about, you know, what are the trade-offs? Is that, is that a fair?
Yeah, I mean, it might be a different activity, but yeah.
Same, different area perhaps, but that, that would be the, the sort of the process of the public workshop, which would be very interesting also.
Um, okay, let's see. I, my battery is quickly going down, so at some point I might need to go find a charger. Um, or we can just. Keep going through and, and I understand, like, you know, I am looking to kind of finalize some questions, but it's okay if I need to go back and tweak them and send them out to you. And you guys can send me responses, you know, if we can settle on a couple and then. Cause it's hard to write together, but.
As it compares to the other things, for me, the environmental question is not as important. But again, not to say the issue isn't important, but what we would learn from it is not as important, but that's my opinion.
I like the environmental question, the second part. What are your priorities for ensuring our community can adapt and be resilient? With climate change rather than events or climate change related events or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good change.
Sixteen, basically just breaking that up.
Uh, we got rid of. We got rid of the first part of that question.
Oh, well, you.
We're actually getting pretty close to us, the unacceptable.
We're at ten, so it's not like we couldn't, we couldn't stick with, well, we're at eleven, sorry, because I lost my numbering on this one, but. Um, okay, so. I think Tom was in support of one of these, um, environment questions too, though it may have been the, the first one, but. I think that. Yeah. Maybe we'll keep this one in for now, or some speak in favor of it. I don't know, Dan, Gary, if you want to weigh in?
Yeah.
Okay, so keep that. Okay, neighborhoods, six or seven? I don't.
Can you kind of combine those? I think it's a great, it has great question elements in it. I just wonder if you could sort of combine them into a single. Single question, single topic.
So do, so do we want to ask them specifically where they live? I'm not sure it's necessary.
Let's see, you can go.
I think the first part of seven is the one I'm really interested in. What makes Brattleboro feel like a community to you?
What assets in your neighborhood that town plan should guide?
I don't quite get that, but.
I don't get that either.
It could be the sidewalks, it could be a little public park, it could be, um, but you know, maybe seven is the better question.
Yeah, seven would be, yeah. I think seven.
I think that I like seven, but I have trouble with only phrasing the question in the positive.
Question, uh, second part of seven could be what are some ways? And or assets or additional assets that the town can provide to help strengthen. You know, because I think we, I, I like the idea of having a question about. Let's say, community assets, neighborhood assets, uh, because that's specific. You're going to say a park, uh, whatever it is. Uh, I, you know, the, the open-ended part of seven, what does it, uh, what makes Brattleboro feel like a community? You know, that, that's definitely a good open-ended portion as well. I think we could keep all, keep all of seven. So.
Maybe six, you can strengthen and guide. I would put guide also after strengthen, just take out six.
Take out six?
Yeah.
I hear a couple of takeout six. Everybody all right with six going?
Yep.
Yes.
They strengthen and guide. I mean, that would probably be more intuitive what people are looking at. And guide the community.
I might, I might have to edit these tomorrow, but, and then I'll send them out. Yeah. Then there's the housing question. How can Brattleboro best guide new housing development? Where can it fit best and why?
Well, I wasn't in favor of that one. I still don't.
Lindsay, isn't it the one you said that people had talked to forever and ever about this?
Well, I just feel like we need housing everywhere, so.
Yeah, I kind of agree.
I am a little concerned it might get a little NIMBY-ish.
Yeah. It will get NIMBY-ish.
And maybe it's better at a land use meeting where we're really trying to figure out and, and, you know. Where we can, I don't know, my computer's going. I, I might have to go find a charger.
Yeah, I think we could do away with that one. I think this isn't the right place for it.
Well, I, 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 I don't agree. Um, sorry, you could get rid of the second half in my book, but I think we. We would be missing a huge discussion if we didn't at least have a question about housing. Uh, frankly, I don't care what the question is, but. A question of some sort about housing should be in there and, you know, yeah, is NIMBY going to come into it? Sure, but. What else is new?
Yeah, so, yeah, well.
It's better without the second half. You're right.
I need to run and get a charger. Gary, you want to? Somebody want to run this conversation? I think we're almost.
We'll just wait for you. It's okay.
I'll be right back.
Amongst yourselves, think of a topic. John, how's the weather? How's you guys been doing? You and, uh, Bonnie? Ready for the, for tomorrow's meeting with select board or what?
I'm going. Are you going to the library? I'm gonna go.
I'm gonna, I, I have to be because they're going to happen with RTM, so. I got to make sure for two hours, look at that, I'm going to have my. My cushion from my chair that day. So it's getting really interesting. We're getting into weeds in the woods. So it's getting really, like, I know on Sunday, you see the big event, the, uh, hands-off. I was coming down and I didn't know when I was coming down Canal Street and I got into that whole ocean of people.
There were about 2,000 people. It was at my church. I was standing right out front. Becca Ballant is amazing. She's such, she's such a little powerhouse. I was so impressed with her. She says some really good things.
It was so interesting everywhere. So, and I, and I, I do understand it's going to be a lot more. Other, uh, meetings in regards to that. So from, from starting Tuesday till May, I think we have to have the budget in.
Yeah, we're kind of planning one a week, that, because I'm part of an organization that's been planning these things. So we.
Oh, the budget meetings.
Yeah, but well, I think it was twice. It's in Tuesdays that they're, but I have to look at the schedule again for the budget meetings. I think. Did Dick DeGray back already?
No, he's not coming back till May.
Oh, okay. So we'll just be coming in to.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. You know how laptop batteries, all of a sudden they just like. One day they're strong and the next they're just draining.
All right, we're just going to wait for Dan and Lindsay to turn.
Okay. Budget meetings tomorrow night is an open house at the library, or not an open house, sorry, a listening session. Um, and then there's a meeting on Thursday night here in the select board meeting room.
I love listening sessions, I believe. They're going, well, basically, that's what I understood through the last select board meeting.
Tomorrow night is.
Well, different, different topics.
Yeah, there's like a couple of different. Yeah.
Transportation. Oh, oh, yeah, you're right. Lindsay, is he still gone?
All right, she's back. All right, transportation. Um, so this is the transportation question.
I would take out the word alternative transportation. I would just say what role should bus, bike lanes, trails, train? And other non-auto centric or whatever word you want to use. Play in Brattleboro. I think using the word alternative makes it sound like it's, uh. Not the right choice, maybe.
Uh, although bus is a trend and, or non-auto centric, okay.
A car too, yeah, automobile.
I mean, you could use the word public transportation, bus slash public transportation. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I would say that's more clear. I mean, in a conversation.
Well, I would also say other modes of transportation, people do use those, those, uh, what are those little carts? That they go up and down Canal Street.
Oh, this, the scooters.
I had to just, yeah, I, there's a word for that, yeah, the type of modes, modes of transportation, I would say.
And not just bicycles, but unicycles.
All right, we're not going to list them all.
We don't want to eliminate disqualified, but yeah, I would also say for handicap, people would just, they have a lot of those devices go up and down in their. Scooters, I guess that's.
Yeah, I think it falls under non-car.
Or, or, yeah, I mean.
Or non-vehicle.
To this being inclusive with. Well, I wouldn't consider it a car. I would say a mobility, other mobility devices, I would have put that under. The people have a different mobility, you know, to get around, uh, so that's.
I think it's.
Just my train of thought.
I think it's an important question because there's so many people who. Use like our sidewalks and our ways of crossing the roads that aren't really maintained very well in the winter. And so this question might help people get to talk about that a little bit. Like if you have to go across the street in a wheelchair, it's pretty challenging in the wintertime.
Or getting over certain, you know, uh, egresses or, or places, there's so many barriers or hurdles. In regards, that's why we said, uh, to, to a different type of mobility that people do, a lot of people are using. Nowadays, even at, if you go up to Walgreens, coming out up and down the street with different other mobility devices.
Okay, I think, so I don't mean to cut you off, Gary, but I'm not sure this, um, is working, this charger. So if I lose you all. My apologies, the meeting might be over. So let's try to crank through this, please.
Well, are we okay with nine? We're, we're, I mean, keep, we're keeping an eight, I heard.
I, I have a suggestion for eight real quick. I, I, we eliminated the tourism focus on one, but. Transportation seems to be at least. Directly connected to, to tourism. I, I think we could at least expect some discussion of tourism or even add in there. I I think we could at least expect some discussion of tourism or even add in there at the end. You know, it it's not just for families and individuals, it's, you know, let's say for residents and tourists. Do you know what I mean? Because like tourists need, like tourists need a very clear crosswalk, for example, like that crosswalk is the crosswalk for them. Whereas a local resident might know, oh, I'm going to go this way, you know, whatever it is, uh.
I would agree. I think that's a good idea if you can find a way to add that in. I also think that if um, your, your charger does fail, I would just like to say that I'm perfectly fine with the planning department proceeding with the list of questions that we have and doing what you need to do to refine them and finalize it. I don't need to micromanage the final result of this. I think we've done a lot this evening.
Mm hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Last one too, number nine.
I appear to have about twenty one minutes left, so.
Perfect, so we got number nine.
Um, does that work? Um, what I added to eight for residents and tourists?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. Okay. Okay, and then number nine. Is about town facilities and services. Um, and this is kind of part of the ongoing conversation with the select board, at least the service part, I think, is. I think the facility part, um, I was thinking of this as a question to help with our municipal utilities and facilities question, in particular, when you think of like Living Memorial Park being pushed off because of our budget concerns, um, we have a lot of old facilities, the Public Works Department. Um, you know, years past, it was police and fire. Now those are all modernized, but. Um, was kind of my attempt to get at something along that line. Sorry, Lindsay, go ahead.
I think that we should have a question that gets at what you're talking about. I'm not sure that this question is going to get you the answers that you're looking for. Um, I think that it could maybe be reworded in such a way to speak to exactly what you were saying about aging facilities or or something of of that nature, and I think you would probably need to give examples for what you mean by services or facilities. I'm not sure. You know, if everyone will know what that means.
Bonnie, I think you liked this question from the start. You you thought it could elicit some interesting.
Yeah, I think um, people will, well, I'm, I'm coming from a very, I guess, a personal point of view on this because I know you know, how important it is to have places for people to use a bathroom and, you know, we had at church, we had the porta potty out there and I would like to see the town um, supply uh, more facilities for people. I mean, we had everybody in the world using that one little porta potty, drug users and tourists and everybody, so it wasn't really appropriate because it was just this one little thing and we need to accommodate more people um, comfortably. Um, so, I mean, and that's just one, that's just one aspect of a facility that we need, but. But I think it is an important question.
Just trying to understand the service, services meaning what they provide as far as cleanup, all that.
Well, no, I mean, the town services, you know, it could be anything from plowing to paving to trash pickup, but maybe that's not someplace we want to go to in the town plan when those conversations are already be having, being had by the select board, but Bonnie, your, your response to my question, I think, is kind of helpful to think if if I'm looking for something and, you know, you're, you're thinking that there are, you know, facilities that are lacking in the town. So it's a combination of aging facilities, but also meeting the needs of the community, like, so, so what are those things that that people think we might need um, that we should be.
Yeah, I mean, especially if we want tourism, you know, and even just, just if you're downtown, you know, you what, you know, how, how do you know where to go eat? How do you know where to go to the bathroom, you know, just basic needs? And that's how I interpret facilities. I'm sorry, I'm just very basic, but.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
So this is Brattleboro residents, businesses, not, even with tourists, when they come in, they're going to want to know where and how to access these facilities too, so I don't know if that might be something you want to consider the ad too, because we have people from out of state asking, where's this at? Where's that? You know, where, where do we go? What services?
So that's, that's kind of the, the tourism angle, and I've heard DBA speak a lot about this um, and others, as well as you're in the downtown and you don't know where to get, how to get to where, you come by the train, like. Um, so that's kind of, that's a little bit different. Um.
Yeah.
But than what I was going for, but I mean, if that's the you know, it is kind of getting at that, like, you're visiting Brattleboro and how do you find things?
We have had people ask.
We could do a question like that.
It's like, well, there's a sign way up there. It's like, it's just, you know, these type of services that are supposed to, as provided that questions come back. In some select board meetings from people I've listened to about certain places and things that they can't or don't know even existed.
Yeah.
What if you asked the question more specifically, like, what is a town service or facility that you really appreciate? What is a town service or facility that you think is missing?
And and even, even if you like negative, you know, challenging the negative, what services could we afford to get rid of if there was a budget crunch or whatever words you want to say? What are the lesser important facilities that we have that we don't necessarily need?
Which ones can we improve on that we currently have, but we're not really getting it out there, that there are services.
Sorry, was the second part of that, what service or facility is missing that you think we need?
Yeah, and then I, I agree with what John just said about sort of the, the other corollary, which is, is there something that you think we don't need? Or should be substantially changed?
What do we need that's not there that people look for?
Yeah, that's part of this.
I think that's the best way to word the phrase that.
Bonnie, what do you think about that? That could get at public restrooms.
Yeah, that sounds really good.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Yep.
Excellent.
I think you, you need to edit the very end of it, though, just as a, but you'll get to that, I'm sure. Should be substantially.
Oh, reduced.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah. Um. Yeah, so there's ten questions here.
I feel like the question that we're not going to get a lot of really helpful responses to is number two. Because I don't think a lot of people know what a town plan is. So I don't know that we have to necessarily remove it or not. I think that conversations kind of lead us oftentimes to different questions. So if someone seems animated about something, we might move on to a question that is related, but I don't know if we're gonna get much out of that question.
I was thinking the same thing, like, I could just see people saying, well, what is the town plan? You know, it's not, it's just kind of a, I don't know, a question that's not going to get us real answers.
We got a lot of people said you got a.
Because we already know what we have to address. I mean, the town plan is what we are.
And I think our other questions get at what's underneath that. All these other questions are about addressing the needs, wants, desires of the town, which I think is what that question is about anyway, so maybe it's just redundant.
If if we prefaced it, or I guess maybe a preface to the whole conversation is has, who has and who hasn't looked at the town plan? Is that, I mean, are we?
I I gave kind of a little script in the document about what a town plan is. Um, I know Tom had suggested to me a question that, you know, have you seen it? Do you use it? I didn't really want to get into that because most people haven't, so I don't think it's really worth asking the question. Um. I mean, I think the majority of people are here are a little unsure about question two. I'm inclined to take it out and then, um. Yeah, I just think we've, we've, I think one can be that kind of warm up question and then I I agree with Lindsay that we're getting at the things that are going to inform the town plan of the elements that we are required to address. Plus the extras that Brattleboro has chosen over the years. All right. I will clean this up. Um, does everybody feel feel okay about this for now? I mean, I can send it out one more time. You can email me back if there's any serious red flags. Um, otherwise.
This is good. It looks really good. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We got a good feedback there.
Well, thanks, this was.
I just got to win on Tom, see what you think.
Nope, Tom's gonna get these.
Gotcha.
We're not.
There it is, that's it. You didn't hear that from me, Tom.
Hey Sue, do we have a member of the public here?
We do not.
We don't now.
Yeah, I thought there was somebody from the public.
He had been here. He did, um, yeah, he didn't stay, so.
Okay.
Um, all right.
I have, I have a question about something unrelated to this one. We're ready to move on.
Let's do that so that I don't lose you.
Okay, um, I was just wondering if at a future meeting, not May, because I won't be here, so it wouldn't make sense then. Um, I would be interested in knowing more about live work in our zoning and what, where it might be and whether we're encouraging or discouraging. I just would like to know more about that in Brattleboro.
Okay.
Now, you'll be able to zoom in at the time, Lindsay, at May or no?
No, I, I won't be here at the May meeting. I have to, um, taking my mom on a trip.
Also, you enjoy it?
Thank you.
Everything will be here ready when you get back and stamped and approved.
Um, so. My battery may be dying, but maybe not. I don't know what, I've got the screen popped up.
There's an X up there.
I know, but it's not doing anything, so I think, I think.
Operating.
I'm really sorry if I'm going to lose you. Um.
You think in the interest of of safety, we ought to adjourn the meeting because we can't actually technically hold a meeting, can we, without?
No, we're gonna have to, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get kicked off, so maybe we should adjourn. I do just want to say, um, I did send you lots of information from the survey. We have a hundred twenty surveys now, so please get it out some more. Um, Gary and I were talking before the meeting. It seems like uh, the, the youth is kind of the really missing demographic that I'm, I'm seeing right now, so I'm going to make some targeted efforts to try to get it to some people I know that run clubs at the school or work with youth. Um, but if you have any suggestions for anybody that we could share it with to get.
Youth is relative, Sue. What age group are you talking?
Um, I think it was the, it was the twenty and under, but also that twenty to thirty range too, so they're youth to me.
Have to have the senior center as well, Pauline.
Yeah, I mean, at the higher ranges of like eighty and above, um, you know, we could, we could use a bolster of that, so the senior center getting it there. It did go out in the e-newsletter this week, but um, that's where we're going to put some efforts to get some more responses, but I, I think it's been a good response so far. Um, I think if you look through, some of the things we were talking about tonight definitely showed up. Um, but it's kind of consistent. I mean, okay, I think we might need to um, adjourn now.
All right, so, uh, I moved that.
Move to adjourn.
During the meeting.
All right.
I would favor, I.
Thank you all. I'm sorry to end so abruptly.
Good night.
Good night, bye bye.
Good night.